Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we are thankful for many blessings. We're thankful to live in this community and to be able to serve the people as a community. We ask a blessing upon them and upon all those that that associate with us and are in town. I pray that we'll make wise and good choices for them when we say these things in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Well, good evening. We are going to start our council meeting this 22nd day of October. And I'm sure we had a long night, for those of you who watched the election. We are now going to call the meeting to order. It's 5:00 PM and we need to adopt the agenda. There was a revision made, so you should have all that revised on your agenda.
Move the agenda with the revision.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. We now have delegation, so thank you to all of you who are here in the gallery. We have the Sheen family and we have also Peter Cacerella from Southgrew, an Economic Regional Development Association, and we will ask him to come forward. So, welcome. It's good to see you again, Peter, and I'm sure we're going to be enlightened.
Very good. It's good to be here. How much time would you like me to take today?
You have about 15 minutes.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
And don't be afraid to cut me off since I'd like to talk about what I like to do. So my name is Peter Cacerella. I'm the Executive Director of the Southgrew Regional Initiative. I am your employee, reporting to 26 towns, villages, and cities and counties within south-central Alberta. I'm here today to give a report to council. The board has mandated that I do get to 50% of our members every year to do a direct report to council, just to keep up communication, so you know what we're working on, and I can answer questions about projects that we have, et cetera. Of course, you have a councillor who sits on our board full-time. Gary Selk is one of the executive members who helps direct the monthly operations of the association. So today, I'm just going to talk briefly about what we've been up to over the last year, what we're working on right now, some unique challenges we're facing, and answer any questions you might have about some of the projects that we have on the go. So, the Rita's, as some of you may be aware, there's nine of them distributed around the province. They are alliances of municipalities scattered throughout rural areas that represent areas that have a contiguous economic familiarity with each other. So for Southgrew, we pretty much share in common an economic base in agriculture and value-added processing, renewable energy, and associated industries like that. And our goal, of course, is to leverage the strength of all of the communities working together to do projects that none of the communities could do on their own, that enhance the quality of life or the development or the economic development and sustainability of all of those communities collectively together. So what does that look like in reality? It looks like doing a lot of big research projects that no individual community either has the expertise or the time or the talent to do on their own. I go out and collaborate with different researchers or hire consultants in order to do detailed economic research that helps leverage new industry growth within a region, or inform some of our stakeholders about opportunities that are available, or helps to get new infrastructure built that's vital to the sustainability of our communities. We also do a lot of global marketing pushes on our chief industries that none of the towns really would have the time or the inclination to work on for themselves, to bring more investment pouring into the region as well, and to make sure Southern Alberta is known for our areas of expertise on the global stage. We provide a lot of training directly to councils and to their staff, and we are also a connecting point for the entire region to come together, to talk to each other about what everyone is working on. So your staff collaborates really, really, really well with all of the other communities in the region, better than, I think, any other area in Canada. It's an extremely unique environment that we have going on in Alberta, and particularly in Southern Alberta. Your two Rita's here, Alberta Southwest and Southgrew, where the communities really pull together. And, to be honest, we're the envy of other areas of the province and other areas of Canada for that environment in which our communities do pull together. So over the years, since we were formed back in 2004, there's been tens of millions of dollars of external funding leveraged for regional projects poured into Southern Alberta. I could talk about various opportunities like that. So I won't go into detail. There's a list of the 2018 highlights, all the different projects and events that we worked on over the previous year. Given that I'm the only full-time employee for the association, we've been really busy. We managed to do this because our towns work together so well and have bought into the messaging that we're all in this together, that I can leverage the expertise and the talents and the time and capacity of the staff from the various towns. If there's an important event that needs to be represented at by Southern Alberta and I can't make it, I can ask one of our executive board members to go, and they'll often set aside time to go and do that for the region, or I can reach out to one of the other staff members. Councilors are busy, and it's really, really awesome to see places like Lethbridge County be willing to say, you know what, our Economic Development Officer can go and represent the region on behalf of everybody. And so we're able to punch above our weight in terms of just capacity as well because of that feeling of camaraderie that we have. So we got some regional projects on the go. This is by no means an exhaustive list of some of the stuff we're working on for the entire region. There's been a lot of multi-year investment readiness work that's happened under my predecessor Pete Lovring and now under myself. That's getting communities orientated and familiar with the components that go into getting your community ready to embrace new investment coming in, because we know there's a lot of economic opportunity in the world right now, particularly in value-added agriculture and in renewable energy. And there's a lot of money being poured down into Southern Alberta right now. So some of our studies over the past years have focused on how do you get your community ready for investment attraction, be that policy at the council level or infrastructure around town itself. In 2017, we put out the Community Business Retention and Expansion and Marketing Plans, which is an overview for every community of what does a BRNE plan look like for our town, and how do we position ourselves to have our best foot forward on the global stage, things like that. Because of the nature and size of these projects and that we're giving them to 26 communities, none of them is on its own a real deep dive into a community. But for most of our communities that just aren't large enough to do this kind of thing on a world-class level, it's a real good introduction to how you do community economic development and how you can do it yourself. And then, of course, we rolled out the Town Folio Market Data Project over the last year, making sure that all of our towns had all of their market data in a really, really nice packaged way that they could present to the outside world. And we're working on the next incarnation of that right now with the provincial government, trying to get them to embrace turning their site selector tools into marketing tools that can be downloaded to the communities as a replacement for these private industry tools. We do work on foreign direct investment. That's a four-year ongoing project that we're just going into the second year of. We've had two foreign delegations come through the region over the summer. One of them came down to Cardston, and they checked out a bunch of stuff along with Bev Thornton from Alberta Southwest. That's a partnership between Southgrew, Alberta Southwest, Economic Development, Lethbridge. And, of course, our broadband work continues. I'll be talking more about that later. We do a lot of global marketing, specifically focusing on the agri-food opportunity. In a nutshell, there's more people than there ever was, and there's more people in the middle class than there ever was. And most of them are in countries where they have limited capacity to grow their own domestic food supply. And so countries like Canada, with regions specifically like ours, are in a great position to increase the amount of food that we're providing to a global market. And that trend is going to continue, and it's going to be a very, very good thing for us down the road. We also work on regional transportation corridors. What that specifically means is we are providing administrative services to the Highway 3 Twinning Development Society and supporting that lobbying effort by giving them bones and structure to their organization and providing them with staff in order to get that done. So the board basically looks at Southern Alberta as bisected by two main trade corridors, and the north-south trade corridor, that Highway 2, Highway 4 corridor, it's great. It's a world-class international trade corridor, but the east-west needs a lot of work, and now is the time to strike. I have high hopes for that, even though we are in a very restricted budget circumstance here in the province of Alberta, of course. And renewable energy promotion. This is probably by far the number one biggest success story of organizations like Southgrew and Alberta Southwest. Back in 2007, the two Rita's plus Economic Development Lethbridge formed an organization called the Southern Alberta Alternative Energy Partnership, and we started waving the banner on renewable energy investments in Southern Alberta. I've just had a research project completed that went out to measure the economic impact of renewable energy investment in Southern Alberta just from 2019 through 2022. Specifically, we looked at nine projects that are approved through either already begun construction, or they are ready to begin construction, there's no more roadblocks in front of them. It's $1.55 billion of external investment coming into Southern Alberta on that. That's oilfield levels of investment. That means 52 full-time jobs, 1,800 construction jobs temporary, $250 million of in-regions expenditure, so money that's spent in the region. The capital expenditure of $1.55 billion is, they buy a lot of stuff from elsewhere, but it's the same with any oil project up in northern Alberta. You hear about a $5 billion upgrader, maybe 500 million to a billion of it was actually spent in Alberta. But the economic impact is still big, and that comes along with all the land leases and the linear tax assessment being paid to the counties as well. So it's no small potatoes, that's for sure.
Yeah, a question.
Yeah.
Is the solar farm that they're going to build out by Spring Cooley, is that part of this project?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could you talk about that just a moment, for just a moment?
The solar?
Yeah.
What particular part about the solar are you curious about?
I want to know how big and what your output is going to be on that.
All right. So which is the Spring Cooley one, again? Where's that at? What county is that in?
It's in Carson County.
In Carson County?
Yeah.
Okay, I have the numbers on the Spring Cooley one. I'd have to pull them up, and I can send them to you.
Yeah, maybe you just send them to Jeff, and we can have that information.
And I'll have the full report out in the next few weeks as well. I've got the raw research data, and I have to put it into a pretty fashion and then do a media release and all of that stuff and get it out there. But the interesting thing about the renewable energy thing is it's just been in the past couple of years that we've hit a break-even point, where it makes sense to do these things without government subsidies, without taxpayer subsidies. And that's a game changer, because private companies don't actually want taxpayer subsidies, because then they're beholden to the government, into government regulation, and they have to play by somebody else's rules. So if you can turn a profit on your own, that's the preferable way to do things. The wind projects that are going in are still running under the renewable energy procurements that happened under the NDP, so they have a nominal subsidy structure, but all of the solar projects are completely subsidy-free, which is...
Okay, cool.
There's just a list of some of the research that we've done over the years. The top three at the, right up at the top there are the ones that I've got going on right now. The cost-benefit analysis for rural broadband is really awesome. It is now finished. I am flying up to Edmonton tomorrow night, and I'm presenting it to Service Alberta on Thursday morning. And basically, it shows that, under the most ridiculously expensive hypothetical situations we could think of, there is an awesome payback for investing in broadband infrastructure, whether you're a private company or whether you're using taxpayer dollars to do it. The return on investment is great. So we basically, it's really hard to crunch these numbers because it's a complex environment, but we picked the most expensive ridiculous scenarios we could think of that were hypothetical and that would never actually be done because they are ridiculously expensive. Basically, full fiber to every premise in Alberta is putting it simply. And even at that level expenditure, over a 20-year period, there's a three-to-one return on the investment. So the thing that we're trying to convey is that, listen, that's a ridiculous scenario, and any real-world scenario is going to have a better cost-benefit return than that scenario. So the return on your investment will be much higher than three-to-one for any real-world deployment. I could talk more about that either in the future or another time. That's just an overview of our strategic plan that we're working through right now. It's been a really fun year and a half, over a year and a half now that I've been with Southgrew. Busy, busy, busy. And we've got a lot on the go and a little bit more to go. But... So you're in an interesting situation here in Cardston. Specifically, you're pretty much ready to go when it comes to broadband. My message to you today is, do it. Just get it done. If we sit around and we wait for tellers to come in and do all the expense, you're beholden to tellers. If you sit around waiting for the government to do something, you could sit around for four years and nothing could happen. There's been no leadership on broadband, either from the federal government or from the provincial government, since broadband became a thing. And if you just pull the plug and do it, if you're able to pull, get the money together, that's my advice. It's going to have positive returns for Cardston, and if you're the ones who are able to deploy the infrastructure yourselves, you've got a lot more control and flexibility in what you do with it. And then you can do all sorts of interesting economic development plays, like McGrath has done just up the road for you. Tie into the regional library network, encourage your entrepreneurs to take online business courses and start new online businesses themselves and participate in the global economy. There's a lot of things that open up, if you've got that gigabit service, to every premise in the town of Cardston. One thing that's been consuming a lot of my time is water security. So on November 7th, we're hosting a Water Security Forum up in Lethbridge. I think Gary's going to be there. Anybody else is welcome to come along as well. I just need to know if you want to come. Basically, our water is the foundation of everything we have going on in Southern Alberta, our way of life, our economy. And this is to start the conversation, to pull together a political bloc, basically, of all the communities and stakeholders in south-central and southwestern Alberta, to say, we're going to meet together every year and talk about these issues that are facing our region down here. Because right now, our water environment's okay, but when we look down the road a few decades, it doesn't look so good. And we know that taking action on these files takes a long time. It's not something you can turn around in just a few years.
So Peter, talking about water, what's the situation for Milk River?
Milk River is the most dire situation.
It is?
Yeah.
So what are you going to do about it?
We need storage. The milk needs storage desperately.
But will the Americans allow you to take storage off Milk River?
Everything I've heard indicates that the Americans are very open to the conversation. So if we put together this group of stakeholders, if we have 42 communities representing all of those votes down in south-central and southwestern Alberta backing that project, along with the irrigation districts, along with the watershed councils, and the different environmental groups, and our stakeholders from the government of Alberta, that's a powerful block of voices that we can now put to work in collaboration with Alberta Infrastructure and Environment to say, this needs to get done, and we need to put a plan in motion within the next few years to get it done. Okay? So this group cannot be a group of experts. That's not what we're good at at Southgrew. What we are good at is putting together the collective voices of all of our councils to push on something. And if we can hire the experts, and we can back the opinions of the experts, and we can make their voices carry weight together when we push on something like this.
Peter, we have another delegation, so can you try to wrap it up somewhat?
You betcha.
Thank you.
This is my last slide. I try to look at some of the opportunities that are available for a town when I go out there. Number one, broadband-enabled service-based businesses. If you get the fiber deployed, there's all sorts of different programs run out of Tech Connect up in Lethbridge that you could take advantage of for free to offer to your people here in town, to start to build new business off the back of that broadband. Of course, broadband's very useful at attracting new business growth as well. A deliberate tourism stop, I was talking about this to the county, I think. Put something outrageous in. Put your creative minds in town to work. What's something outrageous that you could build that reflects the humor and the sense of community that you have here? That draws people to come through and stop. You have so many people heading to Waterton. Make yourselves a deliberate stop in your downtown by putting up something monstrous, like that giant goose that's on the north shore of Lake Superior, or a giant Christmas egg, or a Starship Enterprise, or whatever it is that reflects Cardston. You've got the temple. Make people stop, and then make them aware of all of the other things that are within this little area here, so that they spend some time in your community, spend some dollars, and you're able to make them part of their southwestern Alberta tour. You've got the large industrial building that I know you guys have been scratching your heads over what to do with. That's an opportunity. Community energy generation, I think you guys have had conversations about pursuing that as well? Just making the community more sustainable for the long term. Glamping, obviously, you've got a beautiful campground down here in the river bottom. If you don't know what glamping is, I can answer questions about that. And, of course, anywhere in southern Alberta I go, I keep telling people about the opportunity in greenhousing, because being able to control the environment in which you grow food products, which we're already known for, is a moneymaker, and the infrastructure is very, very achievable for greenhousing. That's all your worship.
Thank you very much. More questions, councillors? Peter, thank you for taking the time. It's always very good to know where our money is going towards. And I think you showed us that a little bit of contribution represents an awful lot of projects and great minds working together. So thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Very nicely done. It was a good presentation. Thank you. All right, so we now have, thank you, Sheens, for being a little bit patient with us. We always put an estimate of time. We never quite know exactly.
No, I...
Go ahead, councillor Doug.
Thank you. Well, I'll introduce myself, even though I know all you people. But there's a few things. I'm Doug Sheen. I'm representing my mom and dad because, and my mom was quite adamant, she leaned over and says, now make sure that you understand that just they own the land, but I kind of manage it or run it, and I'm speaking because I manage it, not because they're senile. So she made sure that she mentioned that. But I appreciate you taking the time. Now, I wish it had been reversed, because now that I've heard Peter, I'm a little intimidated, because I'm not quite as professional and well-spoken as Peter, but we'll try to get through this tax thing. Now, has everybody been privy to this letter that my not senile mother wrote on October 1st?
Yes, we understand the content, and we got some background notes also.
Okay, good, because she says, well, I said, should I read it? And she said, no. She said, I don't think I'll read it, because a lot of the notes I have is in that letter, so I'm not sure. But I kind of want to give you a little background and our feeling when we, because of this. Because we've owned the land for 50-some-odd years, and, you know, we've paid between $50 to $75 a year for all those years. Now, I understand, you know, times have changed and all that stuff. But what happened this summer is, is my mom, all of a sudden, about in the middle of July, she says, what's going on here? Like, we went from $50... I mean, $75 to... To... 72401. And I says, well, that's probably just a typo, because, you know, I had the same thing happen to me in the county, and we went through that. But anyways, we won't get into county at the town office. But, and I says, okay, well, let me handle it. So anyways, and then she said, well, we have until, like, the end of July to pay it. And I said, oh, okay. So anyways, I did a little digging, and I talked to a few people, and they said, well, it's not really our business. It's Morgan Straddy. And so I remember talking to Morgan Straddy, or trying to get hold of Morgan Straddy, because he's doing the assessment, because I remember, because we were leaving just before councillor Court goes to, we have to beat him down to Meadow Lake, so I was changing mom and dad's oil on their truck, and I was talking to, Morgan wasn't there, but his partner was, and he says, you know, there's not really much we can do, because it's legislation, that it's a tax assessment, and we can't do much. And I says, yeah, but like, that's 966% in one year. I mean, I'm not very good at math, but I can figure it out if I ask my wife. And so we figured out it was 966% increase in one year, and I says, that's quite a bit. So anyways, after that was explained, I says, gee whiz, what do we do? So then, after school started, I had a little bit of time, and so I came and started talking to some of the front people down the office. I won't name names. But they said, you know, you can appeal it, or Morgan said you can appeal it, but there's probably not, you're going to lose. I says, well, what's our chance? She says, Morgan said, you know, the thing to do is to go talk to town council, because they're the only ones that really have the power to negotiate, or reduce, or talk about this tax assessment. And so then I came and I talked to one of the front ladies, and she says, you know, it's going to cost you $30. I mean, $30 isn't much, but you're going to lose. And so I says, well, now what? And she says, same thing as Morgan did. She says, come and talk to the town council. And so then I talked to mom, and mom says, well, what should we do? And I says, well, you write a letter. Let's get on to the council meeting. And we couldn't make it to the last council meeting, so now we're here. And what we'd like to do, basically, with you folks, is either talk to you or ask questions, I mean, you guys can ask questions, or, because see, our point is, it's not really changed over the last 50 years. It's gone from a piece of grass that we used to put a few cows on to, it's got to be quite a hassle to spray it because of all the regulations. And so I had Sean Pitcher put it into hay to get rid of the leafy spurge, because that was the main problem we have in this town. So I thought, well, if we cut it twice a year, that'll take care of the leafy spurge, and then just go on to that. So it really hasn't changed. It hasn't been a building on it. And the other thing that kind of confused me is, a few years ago, and I don't know if it's been five years or 10, because, you know, when you get to be 100 years old, years go one after another. But I remember coming in and talking to Miriam, when Miriam was here, and I tried to rezone it, because I was going to try to subdivide it and do, sell homes. And she said, Doug, we're not going to let you do that, because Carson is running out of light industry land, and it's zoned light industry, and so it's not going to work. So I said, okay, well, I'll just keep going on, because that's what we do. And then all of a sudden, talking to mom, she says, and this tax assessment, all of a sudden, it's R1. I said, that's kind of confusing, because we've never received any notification that it's been rezoned to R1, and I was told that it won't be R1, and then we're getting assessed for R1 property. And so, you know, that's something that kind of confused me.
Can I ask you, Doug, do you remember when the utilities were put inside there, when they were lined?
Well, it's been at least...
Because that changed, that actually is what changed the land, the code for that land.
See, but there's another question, or, yeah, a question, because we didn't really request that division. Like, I know it happened, and we don't have any, but we didn't request to have that service go through there. I was quite happy just to keep farming over the land, you know? And, yeah, you put through those services, but, you know, to our knowledge, we never did request those services be put in. You know, and, you know, that's another thing that, yeah, it benefits us, but there's a lot of things that benefit us, and we don't pay for them either. But all of a sudden, this $800, $700 thing is just a little concerning to us. And then, so, oh, a question?
No, I say, I'm sure it is.
And then, you know, we get conflicting stories that, because Brett Stewart bought a piece for X amount of dollars, that inspired us. And then another person tells us that, no, it wasn't Brett Stewart, it was because Maxine sold that land to Anderson, that kind of spurred this on. And so we said, well, you know, that's not, we can't do anything about it, you know? But we'd like to do something about the increase. That's basically, yeah, yes.
Doug, you made an interesting comment, that these services help you. Have you used them?
No. No, there's no connection. There's, I mean, okay, maybe I said the wrong word. They will help us.
Eventually.
Eventually, and then we don't mind. You know, but, I mean, right now, all we're, and actually, this increase, like, I'm not even getting that out of the rent. You know, I'm losing money because of this. I mean, I can't charge, and it's only, I understand, I only, I understand from Morgan that it's only really assessed on three acres.
That's right.
You know, and so, I mean, $800 for three acres, I can't charge that, and I can't make that on three acres, after all the expenses and everything, you know, just on hay. And the hay is quite expensive right now, but...
And all the rest of your land is at $75?
That's the taxes that were assessed.
The taxes for all the rest of the land?
No, all the, I mean, we pay, we pay 72401 on whatever, eight acres or...
If I can speak to that. When residential land is assessed at market value for the first three acres, and then basically $1,000 for all the rest.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And the reason is, is if you lived on 20 acres, you don't want to be paying the residential... And the reason is, is if you lived on twenty acres, you don't want to be paying the residential assessment on all twenty acres. You certainly don't live on all twenty acres. So when they do, it's the same in the county, it's the same rule. So the parent parcel is taxed at market value for the first three, and then there's a very nominal amount for the rest. And that's what this one fell under too. That's the three acre thing.
Okay, yeah, so.
Is how that's working.
May I interrupt you for a minute? I phoned up about this because it came to me unbeknown to any of us. We weren't notified, we weren't asked about it. Usually if you're going to re.
Rezone.
Assess or re.
Zone.
An area, you're notified either by registered mail or at least by mail. Or we had no idea this was happening. And all of a sudden, we get this reevaluation for like seven hundred, six hundred and fifty dollars more than what we had paid. And I was astounded. I phoned up and Mr. Card said, I said, what can we do about it? He said, nothing. I mean, I don't want to point fingers, but I was treated rudely.
Councillor Ben-Grae, I'm sorry about that if that's the case.
I don't want to cause any problems because we're here to try to be fair. All we want is to be fair.
Yeah.
And I don't think this is fair.
Okay, we will look at it.
Right now, how is that land zoned?
So it is general industrial. So let me explain that little process too. Because I had to figure this one out a little bit. So it's always been general industrial, but it's just had a minimum tax implication because it's been farmed. So when Morgan reassessed it as general industrial, the impact of having to be subject to the non-residential mill rate made the taxes higher than if it was just vacant residential.
Farm land, yeah.
So in Jill's background, where you saw she, it's still assessed what it's assessed. But when we apply the residential mill rate, it's a lower amount. So she just said to Morgan, it's empty, it's only being farmed, it's not being used as commercial. Why don't we just apply the residential rate because it's much lower than the non-residential rate? So that was the intent of, of that. But it is as we speak, at least on Orsk, it's sitting as general industrial.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd have to probably process that because.
Yeah, I get why. It's a little complicated.
Yeah, because I understood it was zoned R1. And now you're saying it's.
Yeah, it's, it's general industrial, but it's, they're applying the R1 tax rate because it's lower than the commercial tax rate.
Okay, well, thank.
My question is, if, if we said to any one of you, I'm going to increase your taxes by a thousand percent, how would you feel? I, I, I think it's very unfair.
Well, I guess what we're asking is if there's a chance or if we can negotiate a fair.
Okay.
Price for that.
So there are many different elements that you brought forward. You brought forward that you were not, you were not advised of the changes made to that land with the utilities brought to that land. You seem to not have been aware that there was a rezoning of some sorts. And you did not know about it. So you did not then understand that the mill rate was going to be applied to a different formula regarding the land. So all those are things that you brought forward. And what you're asking for is for council to look at all those in the light of all those elements and see what we can do. So we will try our best. Thank you for your presentation. Unless council has further questions for you, councillor Brown, go ahead. Then we will discuss that in a later portion of the meeting.
This question is actually for Jeff. What is the normal protocol if you're going to jump somebody's taxes that? Like, do we just send them a normal assessment and say, this is what it is? Because don't you normally get a heads up of a little bit more? When we're jumping taxes?
They got an assessment notice just like everybody else.
Just like the rest of us.
Yeah, no, this one was a little different because it originally went out, Mrs. Sheen, you might recall, it went out as the minimum tax of seventy-five dollars.
I paid all of our taxes, which is well over five thousand dollars. And we paid them, we've always paid them on time, we had time. Paid the seventy-five dollars. Three weeks later, I get this form that was there, it's a corrected copy, seven hundred dollars and the seven hundred and twenty-four oh one, actually. And it works out to exactly nine hundred and sixty-six percent increase. I had no idea what it was about. And we just got three weeks later, after I paid, you know, a good month later, after we'd paid our taxes.
So why, why? Why was that sent out that way?
It was because of the reassessment by Morgan Straddy.
After, I know, I understand that. But after, after they've already paid their taxes, then we can come out them again in the same year?
So I'm just going through Jill's notes here so I don't get it backwards. But it just talked about how it, even with the increased assessment, it defaulted to the minimum tax. Other landowners that saw increases contacted and looking at their assessment. And so that's when Jill and Morgan looked at everything. Now, I'm not suggesting that's convenient at all. Like, I get it, right? But at the end of the day, one of the questions you have to ask yourself too is, is the value of the land appropriate?
Right.
Yeah, that's essentially.
Service land, is that an appropriate value? And then you have to have some discussion to whether, how you want to implement the tax on.
Yeah, and that's, that's the issue. Is it change in the value of the land? That is what the issue is. But there's other issue hooked up to it.
Sorry, I guess this question would go to your family. So if in fact I told you for next year, this is going to be your assessment, you would look at renting that property for, you would want more money to come in to pay for that, would you not? If you had a year heads up?
Yeah.
Right?
We have an idea of what's happening. And all of a sudden disappeared, looking like after you owned for fifty plus years.
Right.
And then all of a sudden we get this and it's, what's this thing?
I can appreciate that.
Another thing, he haven't had any idea of changing the use of the land.
Right.
Or like Doug said, he at one, at one time approached and said, why don't we subdivide this land? Because the town hasn't got hardly any more lots to sell. And they said, absolutely not. That's been zoned, it's industrial, that's the way it's gonna stay. And it won't. So we just went on putting the cattle on there, trying to keep the sheep, you know, down to get the leafy spurges off of it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And, yeah, so.
Councillor Barnes?
I guess the question that goes to Jeff here, what's the protocol on servicing land? In my, in my understanding, if somebody wants their land serviced, they would request that, right?
We, we didn't service their land particularly. We have a right of way between the two properties and we extended services to land to the south.
I see.
So now they, it happens to be adjacent.
Yeah, but that's not our fault.
No, I, I understand that, Miss Sheen, totally. But the fact matter is that greatly improved the value of the land. It's now eight serviced acres with power, sewer, water. And I recognize that's not your use right now. I totally get that. But, yeah, it wasn't because of a request by Sheen's. That is true. It wasn't a request by Malins on the east side either. It was partially the work on that, the lot east of the soccer park and the soccer park. And so that infrastructure was extended for other purposes, certainly.
But see, in lieu of that, then, without thinking, like, I mean, okay, if you give us a year's notice and then we all of a sudden we jump up to eight hundred dollars again next year, we're, we're still losing money. And that scares me because if you can do this to, I mean, pretty quick, you could run anybody out that has land, they can't, you can't afford the taxes. You know, I mean, I'm a little concerned too because if you do that to me, I'm done. I just will, you know, pack up and go away because I couldn't afford to pay this kind of money to the land I have. I don't want to bring that up, but that scares me. Because if you can do that to eight acres, what if you run services through eighty acres? I mean, it'd be, the taxes would kill me. I couldn't do it.
I appreciate all that you gave us for information. Thank you so much. And we're going to deliberate on that a little bit later in lieu of all what was said. And we will have a robust discussion on it all because there are many different points that we can see are critical in that conversation. So we will discuss that later. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. If you want to have Mr. Shaw give you a call right after, that'll be probably the preferable way. I'm going to tell you why. We have the budget and the budget is going to take us probably a good two hours. And so we're not going to be done early tonight.
Yeah, and they've got to get to bed soon.
Yeah, okay. Well. So thank you so much for coming. And thank you so much for raising concern about a point that is affecting your wallet. So thank you so much. We always appreciate citizens who come and let us know their concerns.
We appreciate you, you know, hearing us too. And like, we're on a fixed income now, we're both retired. And so this is, if we did this on every acre that we own, we would have to sell too, you know? I mean, there's, it's exorbitant.
There are many, many issues there that need to be discussed. There are the facts, there's emotional, there's the social, there's the economic. There are many different aspects. But at the end of the day, we have to make a decent, fair decision and something that others who are in similar situation will have the same treatment, right?
And we understand, we understand the municipal act and we're, we always are law abiding in that area. But we just want a fair assessment. And we just felt like this was a little over the top.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Douglas.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sheen. Do you guys mind if I pull my desk up here for the budget discussion?
No, please.
If you want to do minutes and stuff, mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So we have under five adoptions of minutes. There was a typo glitch that signal and is fixed. So the minutes of the October 8th are there for your information. And if you want to approve them.
Motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting, October 8th, 2019.
Thank you. Are in favor? Thank you very much. By the way, I'd like to recognize the media that are there. We have Temple Star.
Rebecca.
Rebecca?
Johnson.
Oh, hi Rebecca. Don't have my glasses, I can't exactly put the picture there. And we have, oh.
Cory.
Apple City Star, Cory, that is there. Thank you so much. All right, so right now we're going to go on to number six. The budget 2020, don't get alarmed, it doesn't look pretty at this time. It's a little discouraging when you see the amount that we are short of. But this is why we set priorities. And we need to kind of have a fair discussion on those points. So go ahead.
Okay, so I've given you printed copies there. The mayor's right, if you went to the bottom line of this budget, it's a little spooky. And this is very early, even administratively, I'm not a hundred percent.
Which page?
Well, I haven't started on any pages.
Okay.
The big one.
Okay.
I'm not, we're not a hundred percent there administratively on everything either. But what I want to do is just go through it. Some of the significant things that have been added or changed since last year. Now, the moral of this, this document in front of you is it has a six hundred and thirty something thousand dollar deficit. And it doesn't include projects like a clubhouse or a rec facility. Those, those aren't what is tipping it. It's, it's in some ways death by a thousand cuts, right? It's a lot of little things. However, much of it is also the allocation of our dollars where we're using, for example, tax funding versus federal gas tax fund or, you know, a few things like that that we can discuss. The use of reserves, the use of utility surpluses, all those things will come into the discussion that are going to whittle that down as we go through. But there are some significant challenges in this budget right now that we do need to work through. And there's still a couple of council priorities, not the large dollar ones. But there's a couple of them that aren't fully represented in here just yet. And I'll identify those as we go through. And basically for today, what I'd like to do is just kind of go through it very generally, answer any questions, everybody get a feel. And I would like to even bring back on November 1st. But I want to mention what I'd like to bring back on, not November 1st.
November 4th?
Our CCW meeting, the CCW in November.
Fifth.
Hunter and I were talking, we're struggling with this budget a little bit. Not necessarily pull it together, but we want to look at doing it just a touch differently. We're at a point now, which is, we've maybe been there for a year or two, where utilities are starting to silo from a revenue and expense point of view that they're, they're funding themselves even in capital, which, which we've had to work up to that point. And then we have utilities like the electrical utility, which is a benefit to the rate payer, but it's really hard to tell in this document how much. You would have a tough time going through all that and deciding at the end of the day what the net profit on the electrical department is. It's not clear. So what we're proposing for the committee meeting is we want to bring you departmental budgets that show the net benefit or detriment by function or department. So we'd like to bring you an electrical department, water, sewer, garbage. We'll probably put golf course in there just because of these kind of unique operations that are, we're trying to silo in some ways. And then just look at the net impact of those on the big budget. And I think it'll give us, and myself included, it'll give us a little better idea of what each of those functions.
Costs on a year basis, what the impact on taxes is. And also, because frankly, those right now are beneficial to our budget. Drive revenue, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's a good thing. But that will be on the 4th of November. I'd like to look at it departmentally a little differently. I think we need to spend a little more time on this budget than we have the last one as a group because I think we have some tough decisions to, to make. So I'd like, normally we'd wait until the second week in November, second meeting in November, sorry. But I'd like to bring it back to you on the CCW in November.
And there is another one now. It's a budget, a provincial budget.
So that's a big one and it's in two days, Thursday at 3:15.
So it's difficult to make decisions unless we have a sense. What is the reduction in our transfer payment from the province?
So if you're okay, if I could hit on three or four pages, just to give you an idea of some assumptions we've made. And, and then take any of your feedback back so that we can implement a little better for the committee meeting in November. Any questions before I start down that? Or could we have a reasonably long row?
No, I'll, I'll leave my questions to the questions back in.
Yeah, if I don't mention something, again, I've said this before, I've asked, I've picked out, you know, a couple dozen lines to talk about. By all means, hit me up on any of them. I'd like to just talk about the operational part right now and focusing on 2020. We can spend a little more time on those further years. We have them all built out, we have the budgets built out for all the years. But I'd like to focus on.
So the first line, of course, is taxes. This budget assumes a two percent revenue increase. That may come via assessment increase, a new assessment, or simply tax rate. But we've assumed a two percent revenue increase with a large caveat. And that large caveat is four lines down. We added a new line called taxes policing. I had a phone call with the Assistant Deputy Minister of the Solicitor General yesterday, yesterday. And he said, plan on policing costs coming in the budget on Thursday. He says, we're working out a few things still. It's not a hundred percent, but you need to plan on policing costs.
That would give you an aim, give you.
So they said, we're not sure where on the spectrum it is, but plan on it. So this has an eighty-one thousand dollar touch, which is the fifteen percent range, which I would certainly hope it's no more than that. But just so you're aware, what that does is when you add the eighty-one thousand to the two percent increase, that's a four point two percent increase in taxation between just those two items. And we have a deficit budget at this point, right? So, so the, but my hope, my plan is that we list this policing just like we do home for the aged and just like we do with education. That it shows on, that this is a transfer. This is, this is no profit for the town. We flow this through. So whatever that requisition is, we flow it through. But the couple of other assumptions there is we don't know what school taxes are yet and we don't know home for the aged requisition. So our requisitions are unknown at this point. We've applied an inflationary base now so that that's in anticipation, but we don't know. So still lots of big dollar unknowns. In education, seven hundred and fifty grand, so it's a big unknown. And then when you get down to, and this will come up later in capital, but as you recall, MSI has an operating portion, which is 107841, MSI operating. Now, we've reduced it by fifteen percent.
MSI has an operating portion, which is 107841, MSI operating, and we've reduced it by 15%. There's no evidence to support that number, it's, it's just what we've been anecdotally hearing out there is this 15% number, but Thursday afternoon, we'll know. Right, we'll have a better idea.
Yes, councilor.
Mayor, I sent you an email, and probably received it, on the actual webinar that AUMA is going to host next, this Thursday. Is it? Would it be a good thing for us as a council to listen to that webinar on budget so that we can come down and we could host it right here this Thursday, and then we could just...
When is it, Thursday?
Thursday, about 3:15, 3:00 o'clock.
I'm just looking, I just got something on this earlier today. I'd have to look at that, councilor, I mean, are, are you going to be in the dark if you don't? Well, probably not, because MSI is going to do what it's going to do whether you sit in on the webinar or not, but there's certainly no harm in that.
No, I'm sure what the webinar is all about is a debrief on the budget, on the difference.
Well, and how it's going to affect our municipalities, that's what it said in the, as I read the overview of the webinar. It's an AUMA news clip.
That's up to you, we can set it up here, I'd have to find the info, because I don't have it available here. So, those are some things that we will wait and see, and it'll be very interesting, and again, I, I don't want to call it a perfect story, it's an appropriate comparison, but having massive reductions in your provincial transfers and then increase of things like policing costs, you can almost do nothing and have a significant tax increase by adding, you know, loan costs or even accounting for inflation.
And yet, the direction from the, from Mr. Kenny was to all the municipalities, if we are reducing our budget, we must not pass the need for more money to the taxpayers. That's what is said very clearly at AUMA. In other words, we have also to create resprints, and, yeah.
It's Friday from 2:00 to 3:30, by the way.
Friday, 2:00 to 3:30.
Oh, so that's, that's okay.
2:30 to 3:30.
No, no.
That's when, on the 30th?
October 1st.
Jeff, again, what did you configure on your MSI?
So, 15% reduction in operating capital, again, not based in anything from the province, but maybe it's optimistic that it's only 15%, that's the hope.
That's what AUMA.
Yeah, that's what we're hearing.
Kind of gave us, and I think they're pretty close to the polls.
Yeah. So, we will see after Thursday. Other than that, I didn't have a lot on this first page, most of our other revenues are reasonably consistent. Just, this is a little bit off 2020, and we'll talk about this in a couple of months, we've seen in 2019, we've had a low consumption in our utilities, in our water and in our electrical, which is going to result in some, will be under budgeted revenues on those accounts, so we'll look at how we manage that as we get into the end of the year. But I think it was a little cooler here, maybe, but.
Cooler, less.
Yeah, our consumption on electric and water was significantly lower.
Must be, must be, must have been water and water's issue, hallelujah.
If you go over to page two, and again, anytime, hit me up on any accounts here. Let's see what I have here, one second. One thing on, on 172402, we haven't determined what that increase should look like with the new sites and operations. Again, that won't be huge, but we anticipate that there will be additional revenues of the campground with 50 new sites, so we'll get that plugged in.
Councilor.
How much do we charge per night?
You know, those, I don't know.
30.
32, maybe?
32, 37.
So, there's an option there.
There is, yeah, yeah. And there's always been this interesting debate, this council hasn't had it, but the previous council had some interesting debate on the campground because the contractors, over time, have requested increases. And sometimes it's happened, and sometimes it hasn't, because when you're a municipally-owned campground, the intent is you want a full one, because you want people around milling about town, doing their thing, right? But in the hospitality industry, including campgrounds, there's a, there's a nice point there where you have the least amount of people for the most amount of money, that's the hotel model, right? You charge a rate that keeps the least amount of people in your building wearing, drawing, wear and tear on it, that still gives you the revenue. So, you got to find that balance, and the town has traditionally erred on the side of having a lower rate in the market.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was my point, Jeff, was that in talking with those who are the, were very reasonable.
Yeah, we are, yeah, we erred on the side of being a bit lower to keep more people in the facility if they're doing other things in town, but there might be some room there.
Historically, this last summer, the physical areas have been full, yes, almost every night. Figuring in a new thing's a bit.
Just going to throw up there, I've talked to quite a few people that do stay down there, and some of them are clients, and they said, how can you guys charge so little? It's so cheap and we love it here. I mean, so, there's definitely an opportunity.
I also hear about it whenever we move rates, trust me.
I'm, I'm sure you do. But.
You're about $6 a day in Waterton, then.
There's, there's very few comparable campsites to what we have here, especially with Waterton shut down.
Yeah.
Waterton is up operationally.
It's $38 in Waterton.
What is this, Crook Creek?
Speaking of money being pulled from other places, I'm just looking at a swim club in what they paid for 100 kids, $4,500, and the school division for, you know, we've got 1,000 kids and they pay $1,300. That's a little bit laughable.
Yes. We have had that discussion many, many, many years, and the attitude of the school division is that they already have all those family paying for it through taxes for those who live in town, and therefore, why should there be double taxes?
Yeah, there's a couple of factors in that. One is, I know a council who also managed the swim club, so it gets brought up, but another factor unrelated to that is the time that it's used, so kind of that after-school prime time versus daytime when there would be no use during that time of year, but also, the school division has told me, and I don't know who else has been there, that you hit a certain point where they just pull it out of the curriculum.
That's right.
So, at what point do they just, and the other thing is, none of the other communities in the school division charge them at all, we're the only one that charges them at all.
Yeah.
And so, they push back on that point too, that saying, well, we'll just take it out of the curriculum.
Well, if I can, on that as well, though, I mean, is that even paying for our lifeguarding hours it takes to watch these kids? Like, they're not even paying for our cost on that.
No.
Like, it's so, oh.
No, I understand. These charges is actually on your CCW agenda in two weeks.
Yeah.
Because there's some recommendations from the committee.
Yeah, right.
But yes.
But again, this is a Westman School Division. Yeah. Discussion that needs to happen. All right.
Yeah, I hear you. And that goes for the rink, and it goes for pool, and it goes for, yeah, no question.
It goes for any utilities that is used by the, by the schools.
Well, we're, we're looking at pulling money from other places, I mean, it just makes sense, right?
Yeah. If we go down to the bottom of page two, what you have there is you have a whole bunch of the electrical charges. We are, we are finding that in 2019, we're going to be under budget in those accounts, and so I've asked Kevin to take a more conservative look at those, and to make sure we don't, we, we can afford to have a year or even a little bit more than a year where we have our expenses higher than budgeted or revenues lower, because we reserve all of our surpluses every year for that very purpose. That's the point, because we have a hard time gauging that exactly, but in 2019, we're projecting to have $117,000 deficit in the electrical fees and charges. Now, we have $240,000 in reserves for the purposes of covering the deficits, but we can't sustain that in multiple years.
Okay, is that due, is that due to increased capital expenses?
So, in 2019, it will be due to increased transmission riders from Fortis.
So.
Is what it will be, 117,000 of it is due to increased transmission riders from Fortis, and the difference, the other is lower consumption as a community for electrical.
Should that be a flow-through as well?
So, it's, it's a flow-through as best as we can estimate it, and that's the difficulty. So, we'll address that much closer, in fact, I may look at, I may look at doing that bylaw differently. Right now, you as a council amend the transmission rider annually in January. Fortis changes theirs quarterly, and they changed it every quarter after we passed our bylaw, and it went higher every time.
There's a green factor here.
So, we got behind, right? The question is, do we need to review, we've never historically needed to review that bylaw quarterly, but we may, we may have to look at that.
Is that a trend with Fortis?
Yes. Just a question, and I don't know if the answer maybe you do, the province is wanting us to decrease this and increase that, how much control does the province have over, say, if Fortis is checking up the prices?
Yeah, so, it's always AUC approved, right? So, no approvals go without AUC blessing, but they carry tremendous political wealth.
Yeah. The councilor, so?
So, based upon the conversations that you and the mayor have regarding our solar, since AUC is so generous with Fortis, can they not be generous with us and our own utility and our own electrical generation?
Right.
So, can offset some of these costs from Fortis?
So, we shall see. So, the rider is in your domain, you control what it is, and it's, as best as if we could estimate exactly, it would be a flow-through.
Right.
Now, as far as the regulatory piece, one would hope, and it was sure more encouraged after our last meeting than I have in three years previous.
Totally.
So, just in addition, so I, I think that would be something, Jeff, that we could, it's another notch, another gun that we could use.
Yeah.
But AUC, that, right, quarterly, we're adjusting our rates, so we want to have some opportunity to generate our own electricity to offset this.
Yeah, for sure.
I was just kind of musing in my mind here, what, what kind of increase would we have to get to offset $117,000 increase? I mean, what would that look at for a customer?
Yeah, we're certainly not going to try and make it up in the last two months of the year.
No, I realize that, I realize that. So, I'm just saying, if it was, we're beginning, if we're beginning from.
Yeah. So, we're going to prepare that for you, okay, as a proposal to amend the bylaw.
Please say that.
Yeah, no question, because you as a council have to look at a number of things, we talked about tax increase percentage, but if you increase utilities, it's just a different form of taxation.
That's right.
Right, so you have to look at the whole picture here, so yes, I need to be able to bring to you by December, saying, here's our proposal for the bylaw to cover off those shortfalls, and I'm asking Kevin, frankly, to be a little more conservative, because again, we, we've had surpluses in that same account, we have charged more than what we've paid for this over the last, I can think of the last five years, I think is when we set up the reserve account, so we have $232,000 in that account. So, we can, we don't have to hit the users to make up the loss in 2019, we have reserves to do it, it was the whole point.
Yeah. It'd be interesting to know what other jurisdictions, not in our province, but other provinces, because I hear from my family down in Ontario, what they're paying for Ontario Hydro, the, the rates that they're going down there, and from what I see with my own personal bill, and I see what my brothers and sisters, the sister down there are paying, we're probably about a quarter of what they're paying on their monthly bills.
Oh, really?
They're so ridiculously high down there, and so, and, so, we have to look at everything and say, you know, yeah, people are going to complain no matter what you do, and I understand that, but we have to also be able to keep up to our costs, but there's, there's just no way we can keep subsidizing, we can't.
You should not budget to take in less transmission riders than Fortis.
It has to be user pay.
No way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The user pay.
And, and that's the hard thing, and, and it's like, you have to explain that to, to our clients that buy the electricity, they have to understand why we had to go this road, if we do at all, you know? We know, we understand here, because it affects our, our bill too.
You know, you have a, you make a good point, communication is essential.
Yeah, we have to.
When that happens, and we will make sure that is.
We don't have to like it, that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, it's, those are facts of life to deal with.
Somewhat related to transmission fees, if you go to the bottom of page two, 112505, this is a new account, solar farm revenues.
Which one?
Bottom of page two, 192505.
Oh, yeah.
So, we're anticipating those revenues coming back. Now, the one thing we don't know yet, although NMAX is projected and Kevin Phillips agrees, by the way, I need to bring Kevin down to meet you guys sometime, I was talking about him, he's never come. I'll bring Kevin down to meet you sometime, being he's one of our larger contractors. That there, it is intended that this will help reduce our transmission charges, not to the degree we like, but to a degree, that impact is yet to be understood fully, we got to see how this thing performs. But, so, we, on the revenue side, we've budgeted, the revenue, you'll see on the expense side, we've essentially washed it out for the next 15 years with the loan payment, okay? The only thing that may change is, as you've seen, if you look at that line and you look at 2021, 2022, and I actually would like to back this off a little, we've applied an inflationary factor to the cost of electricity that we may get over those years, but the loan payment stays fixed.
Yeah.
Right, there is an inflation on the loan payment, and so, hopefully, frankly, I mean, I don't hope that electricity prices go up from a purely budgetary return on investment for the solar farm point of view, that if there is inflation on the price of electricity through the pool, that that will benefit us by bringing in additional revenues, so that's the hope there, but we did apply an inflationary piece. I don't have much on page three to share with you, we did increase council fee and per diem only because that'll be negotiated, but we don't know to what degree, and I'll have that on your CCW in November, I should be ready for that. The only other thing I just wanted to throw out, because I just get bent about it, is on 212108, our WCB cost will double next year. Yeah, WCB, we, well, we've had some injuries, and so, they keep a three-year, I believe, running total of your injuries on your record, and it's 212, where did I just put it?
208.
Yeah, 21218, so, yeah, we're, we're effectively doubling.
Probably 20 grand.
The WCB premiums, which is, which hurts.
So, we need to wait three years to have a clean bill more or less before that figure goes back down to the original base?
And if we had claims three years ago, then they'll fall off next year, right? So, they'll fall off, and then it'll be that, but they look back, and we did have some big claims over the last couple of years, we, so, I mean, that's what it's there for, it paid those people as they worked through their injuries and their transition to, one was to new employment, one was just an injury that they stayed with us, but at modified duties. So, how that'll work, if they, if it's an employee who's, well, I'll use Leonard, because he wouldn't mind, he, he broke his arm.
Yeah.
And so, he obviously couldn't climb a pole with a broken arm, so he's on modified duties, and so, WCB will pay us a portion of the wage because he can't perform the task that he is trained and hired to do and paid for, and so, we'll work with WCB to do modified duty stuff, but then we'll get compensated a little bit, and so, those things cost.
But he's not, his arm isn't broken now.
He's good, no, he's 100%.
He's good to go now, right?
Yeah, yeah, he's been good for quite a while.
But he's totally.
He's one that's on, you know, from three years ago.
Mm-hmm. Again, it's not his fault, it's just, that's the nature of the beast.
And Robert.
Yeah, yeah, so we've had a few over the years, and that hits us.
Yeah.
Page four is really somewhat minor, and again, I'm just comparing this to last year, it doesn't mean that last year was right, I'm just giving you comparisons from last year here. As far as 2020, there really, the big things there is, and I don't want to get too much into it, because we've been dealing with this in closed session, but we put in the budget this proposal with McGrath on the peace officer idea.
Mm-hmm.
I'm cautious about this being super public for this meeting, because we haven't finalized negotiations with McGrath on the dollars, so I have a revenue amount on the first page that McGrath hasn't seen.
Right.
Right, so just treat that with caution, and I realize there's people that will watch this, and this will all come out soon. And I realize there's people that will watch this and this will all come out soon. You know, as it's negotiated, it would be very public, but at this point.
Kind of a fuzziness on that.
Oh, no, it's, it's okay. Sorry. Closure. So that's mostly what you see on page four for increased expenses because we're in the expense side now. Page five, there's a couple of big pieces here and a couple that find, like in principle, I'm, I'm supporting, but financially I'm struggling with. And they're both related to fire. And those come down if you go to two, two three, yeah, two, two three, two hundred is one of them. And two, two three, seven, six, five. So fire requisition, we have, and again, we don't have the requisition from fire authority yet. We've increased by thirty-five thousand because we've been talking about this notion of a regional fire coordinator and splitting that cost three ways between McGrath, the town and the county. There, there's a couple percent in there for the, the villages, but effectively we're splitting it three ways. And so that will directly affect our requisition, there's no question about it. Now, as that's formalized a little better, I'll bring it to the table and we can all discuss it and send you your collective opinion back with councillor South. But it's starting to formalize and it's starting to get a little bit closer to, to what that should look like. And then the second one is the transfers to reserves. And so after we bought this truck, I say we collectively as the authority, it was pretty apparent that at the current rate of reserves for new equipment, we weren't going to have enough to replace the next truck when that time came around. We, we took everything but two grand out of that fire truck reserve to buy this first truck. And so what we have in this budget, we can have good debate about it, you can have good debate about it, is we've, we've put it eighty thousand a year for reserve. Which is kind of indefinitely right now to keep those trucks on a rotating schedule.
I mean, the, the cost of those trucks has gone up.
Four hundred and fifty grand.
It's absolutely.
Eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, almost five hundred thousand.
You know, the time you equip them properly.
And that, that was the least expensive of the bunch out there, wasn't it, Gary?
No. It was, it was within a few, like ten or twenty. But anyway, can I just comment on that? One of the things that we need to consider as a council is the fact that when it comes time to order a fire truck, it's a year to build it. So they'll be, they, I mean, the partisan county emergency services will be coming back to the town, the county, and we're not saying, "We want to order this a year in advance." So we're going to have to have, what is it, Jeff?
We had to put fifty percent down, I believe, to order it and then another twenty-five when the chassis was completed and then twenty-five at completion or something along those lines.
Right, so.
Yeah.
You know, a year out, you've got to look at fifty percent of the cost and then twenty-five, twenty-five. So Jeff's right, we've got to be a little more aggressive because that truck will be due for replacement again within the next four years.
So it's considerable. Yeah.
Not the new ones.
Yeah, the one, yes, the older one.
The next bill.
The next one we do for replacement.
Yeah. So again, we'll, we can debate some of the merits of this, I just want to let you know what we've put in for now, so you're aware of it.
Yeah.
Page six.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, councillor, yeah.
So on two, so sorry, page five.
Yep.
On two, three, two, one oh three, what is that? PWSNW blood triad work?
So we, when we do, if we have to change like a water valve or some of the stuff in Moses Lake, then we just allocate some public force budget to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we did a lot about three years ago. We did, we did one big, we repaved everything, we dug up, like replaced all the sidewalk that existed. So we don't have to do that much now. We played catch-up a few years ago, so it's really minor, you know? And, and I'm still endeavoring to try and get Blood Tribe of Works to actually take over the entire responsibility to water. That's still my preference. Anything else on fire?
So just a question.
Yeah.
So we're not doing any sidewalk repair in 2020?
It's probably, and we'll see this, it'll be lumped in with the capital projects probably. Most likely that's where, excuse me, you're going to see that. It's for him, had to, we kind of use the same amount every year and he allocates whether it's going to accompany, be, if it's a whole block, we put it under capital. If it's a chunk here, a chunk there, then we have it in the operating side.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's a little bit confusing, a little bit, you know? So page six, this one's pretty clear.
Can I just ask you something? You have line paintings. Is it possible this year to have the line on a highway going through town painted, the one that Volker Stavon won paint?
Probably not, to be honest with weather. But I also went and looked at that, which one specifically? You've hit me up on this before, which one are you talking about?
There's one on the front of the theater.
Yeah.
And the other one on the front.
No. Oh, yeah, it's down by the pro shop car. Yeah, okay, gotcha, yeah.
And the other one is on the front of the hair.
Yeah, barbs. Okay, so those two.
The crosswalks you're talking?
Yeah. The crosswalk that the province will not deal with.
The reason why it's a provincial highway and it only allows so many crosswalks in the provincial highway.
Only at intersections.
Yeah, that, that's what I was going to say because we asked about getting an additional crosswalk a few years ago and they, they told us they, if anything, they would take one away. So, so we just kind of, you know, leave well enough alone.
If we do it yourself, it would be fine.
Well, is that what we do? Do we get somebody from the town to go paint them if they need to be done?
I don't know.
Can we do that? It'll much reduce costs.
Well, we, we hired a contractor.
What do they charge to do something like that? Like marshal, marshal lines, like sort of thing?
Anyways, just so that maybe we should do it. If nobody else could do it.
Okay, page six. The only thing on page six I wanted to touch base on, and this was a council priority that we didn't, I don't have in here yet. And if you go down to storm and water, so it's in the two, three, seven and the two, four, one accounts. In two, three, seven, two hundred, and this isn't a great location for it, but we intend to still do that regional stormwater study with the county and the Blood Tribes, which we need to get out to bid here right away because frankly, we're, I'm not getting response from the Blood Tribes, so I just need to move on. But we need to potentially have to fund that if ACP doesn't come through. Now, ACP grant should open next week because the budget will come out this week. So my hope is ACP will come there. But if it doesn't, I, we may plunk half of that cost in to this account and with the assumption that county will pick up the other half.
Where is this located?
So, well, it's just looking to do a store, a whole community stormwater study and how our stormwater drainage interacts with the county. And the county's agreed to, to partner with us in that. And that's just one, the water study, we've already put out to bid and we have a preferred contractor, but we haven't awarded it yet because we don't have funding. But the storm one, we've been waiting for, we requested the Blood Tribe to participate. They said they would, the mayor and I went to the meeting, but we've never received any letter to support that, so I'm just going to move on without them at this point. And then if we can benefit them by doing the study, great. But I, I would like to potentially, if we can figure out how to manage all the overall funding, plunk half the cost in storm sewer collection in, for that study and then underwater distribution expenses, half the cost of the water study in case ACP doesn't come through.
So the study is at the eighteen thousand dollar you have?
Uh, no, that, that isn't.
That doesn't look like the right amount.
No, 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 the study, I don't know how much it'll be, mayor, so we have to put it to bid.
So you don't have it in there?
No, it's not in there. And the water study isn't in there and we know that's a fifty-two thousand dollar touch in that.
Yeah, okay, so that's what I was wondering, I would think that's too low.
This, this, is this the, the collection down at the bridge here that goes into the river?
Generally.
Just all over? Because I just wondered, because that's kind of confusing, it says Third Avenue Drainage. So that's why I was asking that question.
Oh, um, that was for this year. I'd have to look what part it was doing there and what that project was. I want to say, what was that one? Shoot, it escapes me, councillor, sorry. It escapes me.
It's not across the street in front of the, you know, double subway and in that alley.
Oh, yeah, you're right. That's what it was earmarked for, yeah.
Because it freezes in the winter time.
Issues with that, run into a number of issues trying to get the right elevation.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And that makes still sense.
Yeah.
So Jeff, I'm anticipating two, three, three, one hundred to disappear.
Well, so I shouldn't mention that. And I had it on a note here, I have not considered any potential ICF deliberations in this budget. So it's status quo. Now, if we can get something settled, awesome. And I'm happy to amend the budget for it. But right now, there's no ICF potential deliberations reflected in the budget at all. Yeah, I'm hopeful, but there's nothing there. So those are some things, next time when we come back in CCW, I may plunk those two studies in there. We'll have to figure out funding and I'm hopeful it's ACP. But, but those will come back in.
Do you think it will be funded fully?
I would hope so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I just know with the water study in particular, if ACP doesn't fund it, well, and three of you know, the county wants to see that study happen and, and so should we, frankly, I mean, it's an important study. So we need to figure out then how we'll find it.
Yeah.
If ACP doesn't come through. Page seven, I don't have too much there. The only thing that may need to be added, and Jill is working on costs, if you go to two, four, three, two oh two, recycling contract, is that when we talk to Kim, we may need to just have some baler and trailer money in our back pocket if that baler goes. Now, as councillor South knows, there's a lot of stuff going on in this area right now with what might happen, but we'll get those costs and we'll at least bring them to you for consideration. Whether they make it through or not, we'll have that debate. But we need to acknowledge that because we know that's maybe an issue that will come up.
Jeff, our regional contract with the garbage, that's not, that's not a requisition, is it?
Well, it depends how you want to define it. Effectively as a requisition, yes, they, they have the, well, so they're an authority, so they don't have the legal ability to requisition, but we treat it just like one. You know, I wouldn't, we don't treat it any differently.
That's a whole story. They're not a commission, but a requisition, the same way as the fire authority used to do the same story.
Who's also an authority.
That's a huge cost.
But yeah, we treat it just like one, councillor.
Yeah, it's a huge cost, no kidding.
The other thing that needs to come in here, and Shim will have some cause for us on this fairly soon, oh, sorry, on page eight, sorry. Oh, sorry, councillor.
Go ahead, sir.
I was just looking under native liaison council. And it says that our peace officer no longer.
Yeah. So what happened is we were taking some money from FCSS to, to fund, originally it